Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, July 10th, 2018. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Program. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Matt for brief discussion.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we have reorganization to do beginning of our first meeting in July. To the absence of Ms. Steinheber this evening, I would recommend that we hold full reorganization at our next meeting. But in the interim, just to keep things moving, I would call for a nomination for Mr. Brooks to retain chairmanship this morning.
I'll have Mr. Brooks retain chairmanship.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Someone? Brooks? Thank you.
We have an A&amp;I at 14 Laurel Lane, Joseph Kellinowski. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you please come up to the table? You can, if you want to sit.
Mr. Chairman, what we have is a plan of land to divide off proportion. The main lot has created a second lot meets minimum requirements. It has a building lot. This is on a private street known as Laurel Lane. Private way. With Laurel Lane with DWDR, our town engineer, Bill Coyle, and I have reviewed this plan. It's already, we can hold our conference until the applicant just talks a little bit more about the purpose of these.
So what we're looking to do is make part of some lands of just over nine acres, and we're looking to cut off about 40,000 square feet to put a single family home on for my son to build on.
Which would be Lot Two.
Which would be Lot Two, yeah.
And you remain Lot One at that acreage minus whatever he's getting.
Forty thousand dollars.
So everybody can see where the road is. It's coming.
You don't mind? I'm okay.
Yes. I'll show that also. See, see this? Fishing. I got a map. Sure. You got it. High forward. Here to it all.
So Laurel Lane, consult Pinner Rock Road, which is section 20. There's a mobile park here, and then there's a, there's another one. Pinner Rock Road crosses over the diversion channel. Laurel Lane is a private road.
So this is south side of the corner?
Yes. South of the street.
So you roll by the dumpster park and point?
Not quite.
If the back of my land, it butts FedEx's land.
As you go up through the chair, you go into, onto 20 into Worcester? Exactly, you actually have to go into Worcester to get to Laurel Lane. Take a right turn just before Papagino's McDonald's, before Greenwood Street.
And you cross over the delivery?
Yeah, you do. There's a car.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pump station.
Pump station, yes. Exactly. That's that last pump station.
That goes from there.
Before it goes into the city.
So where's the pump again?
Pump force, right.
Laurel Lane, not a place. So it'll have that 392? It's 380. It's 380.
Right. I don't know what requirements are on the plan. I think it's those. Did have an amendment to the plan. Jarvis Land Survey. This was a recommendation of Joanna Bacon, our civil engineer. Was to make sure that the label shown here is just kind of floating inside of this parcel. What was added on the Mylar that's before you today is a box with some arrows indicating the exact location of the right of way. Those are C2 arrows here pointing inside of the right of way. On the original plan, it was approved in 2004, I believe, when we originally had this lot created. Laurel Lane was written within that right of way, but now that we're creating Lot Two, the bounds are shown within that space. So you move the label outside, but just forgot to put the arrows pointing to the existing right of way. So that's been amended on the Mylar that's before us. That was the only change that we had to recommend. Other than that, the plan looks good from the power.
Nick, any questions?
No.
Scott?
I'm fine.
John? Bill?
No, as Matt indicated, we can do the plan. It's an existing private road. There are existing houses beyond this house, and typically if your house is already beyond the location of where they're dividing. You don't normally have an issue with it because you already have access going beyond this location. It's a gravel road, probably no more than 14 feet wide, but it is private.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
Is there any popular amendment? We have motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is it both? Good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Here's a Mylar. So once this is signed by the board, you can take this with you. Just take a moment for them to all sign this. I haven't seen it in a second.
Grab these two right there.
What's that?
Not rate, rated. That's what we said.
Per the dial on Laurel Lane.
You guys want to start?
Those are all on, on stuff. Coach, next.
Why don't you take a, a right?
Actually, I can't actually sign it yet. I have to get your signature to the registry first.
Yes.
Grab these over there.
Yes, there is.
We decided to do that.
Yeah.
Give it one.
With the second one.
That starts at Worcester, then goes to Milbury, and then ends in Auburn. I mean, goes to Auburn, then Milbury. We just paved the, um, say what, sign it in cash, mark it.
There's a super there.
There's still three dollars went on there.
Okay, we have a 7 o'clock applicant. First, Worcester Pentecostal Church. Church requests wa, for waivers of site plan approval to operate a church within an existing church facility under section 3.2.3.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 188 Oxford Street North. This has been continued from June 26, 2018, at the applicant's request. The applicant present?
Yes.
Come up to the table, please.
Just wanted to add that with Ms. Steinheber's absence today, Mr. Lynch has signed a Mullen Rule Form. He was not a member at the time of the June 12 hearing. Having missed only one hearing and becoming a member on the 26th, he's now eligible to vote the application this evening.
Wrong?
Yes.
Make sure you have your name.
All right. May I may I kind of briefly stand now? Thank you. So what we've received lately, well, first of all, this is a proposal for a, to remodel or refurbish the existing St. Joseph's facility that's been vacant for several years of 188 Oxford Street North. Pastor Nick Gonzalez has been with us for a couple of meetings now, going over parking, traffic circulation and such. And we relayed the concerns from our last meeting to Paul Bamba for his feedback as well. And we received some of that feedback, which I presented to you this evening, and also repeated with our DWDR, town engineer, Mr. Bill Coyle, as well. And I've shared our concerns with both parties. But having learned that you guys were both going to be here today, I asked Mr. Coyle to sit in with the meeting also, so we can try to lighten up some of the circulation and parking questions that we have. So that's where we stand currently, Mr. Chairman.
You can speak and present whatever you'd like.
Yes. At the last meeting, I was asked to get an updated parking plan with the engineer's stamp, which I haven't done that. That's not the one that.
Right, that's the older one.
Okay.
Number one, we just got.
But I got a copy with here.
Sure, I circulated it to them.
Oh, okay. So they have a copy. So I have done that. The other thing I was asked to do was I was asked to bring letters in writing from, from Paul Bamba about the circulation. He has some concerns about that. Just wanted to share that what I'm trying to do is in the old building, bring my group of people there. Obviously, my group of people is a lot smaller than the group of people that have been using this parking lot for years at the St. Joseph's Parish. This parking lot has been used, I don't know how many years, but Paul Bamba is here. We are going not, we're going to be using the parking lot at different times that they're going to be using it. I don't know how many cars at the St. Joseph's Parish actually use the parking lot, but I have between 18, 20 cars. We're a small group compared to the St. Joseph's Parish group. And this, what was requested, it will change everything that's been done for all these years with Paul Bamba's people. So he's here to express his concerns and so forth.
Can I ask you, I thought at the last meeting, we said that in the parking spaces in the back, that we were going to take off, I thought two on each end for the ingress and egress.
Well, I do, I do have the updated engineer's plan.
It looks like you might have taken two off on the south end, but not on the.
Well, the drive is going to be done according to code, whatever the code is. Two parking spots will be 18 feet wide. I don't think that's the code for drive.
24.
But it's going to be done according to the, to the, uh, right. According to the code, whatever the code is required.
It's like you're turning the red aisle, travel aisle, it's 24 feet. All right, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Paul Bamba?
I've got a concern. My people use the crosswalks. And so if you put, if you require a one-way pattern, that means my traffic and all the other traffic that's going through there will have to traverse the crosswalks, which will put my crossing people in jeopardy. And I have a serious concern about that. Presently, traffic coming from the south enters in the south entryway and doesn't cross the crosswalk. Traffic from the north enters in the north pattern, in the north entryway, and does not cross the crosswalk. Meanwhile, people using the crosswalks have a relative safe situation. If I have to take, if we have to take the northbound traffic coming from the south and cross both crosswalks, you're putting my pedestrians in higher jeopardy.
So they'd be crossing the upper one and the lower one?
Both, in order to make a left turn at the stop sign, which is a tricky maneuver to start with. See, presently, at the stop sign, people aren't making a left turn. They're making the left turn heading north into that entryway. They don't cross the crosswalk. My pedestrians have an easier move across the street without that traffic pattern.
I don't think that upper notch driveway is 24 feet.
It's 15.
Or 12.
Well, through the chair, I think what Father's indicating is they want the southerly driveway where Matt has the cursor to be full access, so to be, all moves to be allowed to that driveway. Initially, through engineering, our review, we felt that, given the narrowness of that driveway, in our concern, we certainly didn't want vehicles entering out into Auburn Street. We felt that that would be an entrance only. So coming off Auburn Street directly across, that would be entrance only, and then you would circle around the rectory area, so it exits out the other driveway. Because that driveway to the south is not sufficient, sufficiently wide enough for two lanes of traffic. I understand that, you know, masses.
I take weight on that one, yeah.
So, southerly driveway, right. And I understand masses begin and end a certain time, and persons come and go, but you can, you never know, if you have full access allowed, there's the potential that cars could be exiting, and then cars are sitting on Oxford Street that can't enter because not adequate width. So we felt as though if, if the access was going to be allowed, full access to that driveway, that driveway should be wide. I did go out there today, I've looked at it in the past, I went out again today. Desirably, the width would be 24 feet. I recognize that there's challenges to accommodate 24 feet in comparison, the St. Joseph's Church, the driveways on Oxford Street North and Auburn Street, both of those aisles are 24 feet wide, which is pretty standard for a two-way access. That driveway is 15 feet, and there's a little challenge if you have a tree with a root system, and then you have the house, it widens out to about 19 feet at the house and the rectory. But certainly 15 feet is not adequate width for two-way traffic.
So the tree and roots would have to promote a few of that.
I think we'd have to, we, you know, it's, we'd have to look at it because, you know, you could, you might be able to snake a driveway through there, holding one side, widening on the other, and then pulling in as you get closer to the rectory, because you have 19 feet already in the rectory. Kind of have to look at what your constraints are, and then see, can you achieve 24, which is desirable? Is something lesser than that considered based on the constraints?
Could maybe go 22, but not really much.
Go to the area again, Matt, please. See, my thought was, if everybody coming from the north are right in, ready? They went around the building, it'd be right turn only coming out. Now, as far as crossing the crosswalks to make a left-hand turn, it's still different than anybody coming down Oxford Street, continuing straight through. It's no difference.
I will say through the chair, the other concern that I had, and you can make the case, I think, for one-way circulation, and I can make the case for full access.
Yeah.
Now, just, my concerns are, and then we think about them, is if you're on Oxford Street North, heading north, heading towards Worcester, and if someone was to turn left in the first driveway, the southerly driveway, vehicles behind that vehicle may see the brake lights going on, it may think that that person is stopping at the stop sign, not realizing they're taking a left into the driveway. So because it is so close to the intersection, there is the potential that rear end, could increase rear-end accidents there. Just trying to give you the pros and cons of.
I do that all the time. That's the driveway I use. Nobody comes up my tailpipe there.
But I think just as you increase the traffic, though, the probability of a rear-end accident would increase, whereas if all the vehicles were stopping at the stop sign and then turning left, it would lessen that probability of that happening.
Okay, I got news for you. People do not stop at that stop sign.
Yeah, but with that said, I'm not opposed to the left turns in that driveway. I just want the board to be aware that that is a potential concern. On the other hand, having the left turners go into the intersection and turn left, now you're introducing more vehicles into the intersection. That's why I'm saying, you can argue either case, but I just want you to be aware of what the different issues and concerns are. I'm not opposed to full access on that southerly driveway. I just think if the board is going to allow that, I think you have to look at widening that driveway.
Would you, would you prefer, Bill, if you had to do this one-way, you go in southerly entrance, is that entrance, and come out the norway entrance, is that exit?
No. Right, right. If that intersection's already very difficult.
Because when they leave mass, I don't hear anybody says, they come out of that norway driveway, take rights and lefts.
Right. Well, we'd have, we'd want signage, one-way sign, granted, people don't always abide by signage. So the, other than signage and arrows enforcement, is there anything to stop from that?
The other thing is, when traffic is coming to an event, it's all moving in. When traffic is coming out, it's all coming out. Rarely, and I'm saying very rarely, is somebody coming in when the other people are going out. And that would be true if he has a service. By the time he's getting ready to start his service, my people are up here at Central Street. My people have gone from there.
So when, what would be your times in masses?
My, my last one ends at 10.
With Sunday?
After 11.
So you have three on Sunday?
I have one here and two at the church. Seven and nine.
This is kind of out of the box, but why don't we just scrap the parking lot behind the church and use the wall to cross the street? That parking lot's going to be empty. You have, you have two crosswalks, access over to that side of the street, short walk down. Only people allowed into that parking lot are, the cursor is now standing there. Here. Eliminates all your traffic concerns. Now you have good access there, going out on Oxford Street, and you have another access going out on Auburn Street.
So you're wanting the people to go to the old, you sent it, section, path over here, John?
Correct. And you got parking only by the church. Nobody else parks in the big parking lot. Walk across the street and walk down. It's not like it's 10 miles or anything. It's probably 500 feet.
It's, it's not a lot, but in bad weather, they should probably take the wedding to the church. And in bad weather, they're going to pop the bound, over and up towards the end and back.
Do you see the walkway going down to St. Joseph's Church?
Left here?
That one right there. That's more severe than walking down the street in bad weather.
For his people, that puts them in that parking lot, and they better cross Oxford Street North.
Correct.
For advice.
I think through the chair.
I do it every day. See this gray hair? Part of that's because I cross Oxford Street.
Oh, but I mean, when you have services, when you have mass, you have somebody out there. With the stop sign. You could do the same thing.
I think through the chair, ideally, engineering-wise, eliminating the driveway that comes out into the intersection would be the preference, and having one full access run.
There you go.
But whether or not that's something that.
You mean, make it full access on the south driveway?
That one right outside, you close the other.
Lock off the other one?
Close the other one completely.
So everybody comes in there and goes out there furiously?
Engineering-wise, to me, that would be the purpose.
And that is probably the smartest solution I see, because I live there.
May I ask? But then, again, through the chair, that would be quite a widening.
Yeah, widening, you know what, I don't think it's a, you're going to widen, you're going to have to do some things. You take the tree down, dig it out, widen it.
Does the town hold stone to heights high in the middle? Is that part of the?
That drove, this thing?
It's not town. It's the housing.
Who's that line? Who's the prop line on it?
That way you have an access.
Probably a parking lot. Yeah, it should be, it should be fun to let somebody walk. That's just that tree. It's whether or not you have to take the tree down is the biggest thing. You might get a thread around it, but it's.
I hate to do that to beautiful tree.
It is. I think potentially, if it was me looking at it, I think you could widen possibly two feet on the tree side. That would get you up to 17, if you, you might get three feet.
You could skip a little bit on the other side.
Yeah, if you start going more than three feet, that, I don't know how that root system is going to hold up over there. You might then get into a wall.
The root systems are ready under the driveway, so.
Yeah. Right, I mean, I hate to take mature tree, but you could widen two to three feet on that side, which would get you up to, you'd say 18 feet, and still need another four to six feet. You could throw your four feet on the opposite side, and then you'd have to thread it in away from the rectory.
I mean, I could see us saying 22.
22, I think, is reasonable.
22, really much less than that.
I agree.
You're saying bring anybody to the tree and snaking around the tree.
Well, you'd have to widen, you'd have to widen up against the tree, well, two to three feet.
Once you go past it, go to the left.
Right, you can see it does it now. It's just kind of snaking around, and it widens to 19 feet now when you get to the front corner of the rectory. So at that point.
It sticks out a little more there. You could grab a little bit maybe there on that.
Right. You wouldn't want to get much, any closer to the rectory, so you hold that as a constraint, and you thread it through 22 feet, minimum. And then you flare it at the, at the roadway.
Whatever you want to.
Just have one main driveway.
How would you suggest blocking off the others, just so that there's still access? Or what do we, what do we?
I would, if agreeable, I would remove the asphalt for a certain distance, so that people don't try to drive over it.
Like grass.
Manscape it.
Yeah, manscape it.
And then that takes my traffic heading south over my crosswalks.
But we wouldn't be using this now. It'd be only the upper driveway.
Handicap people. You're putting a handicap there.
You could leave a sidewalk, you could leave a sidewalk if you wanted to.
Oh, yeah.
But you're taking the traffic over, the side, over the crosswalks.
I mean, I'd have to think about that, but seeing either way. I mean, I'd have to think about that, but seeing either way, the traffic's going over. Depending on which way they go, they're going to go over the crosswalk.
And additional cars, you are talking, how many services do you have?
Just one on Sundays. Tuesdays and Thursdays, nights.
Sunday, two, Tuesdays and Thursdays at night, and Sundays only one? Eighteen people, you said, eighteen cars?
Eighteen, about eighteen to twenty vehicles.
Twenty vehicles.
Which I'm sure you hope overall. But my, my point at this time is, that's a lot less cars than what are using the parking lot now.
Yeah. How many use the parking lot now?
That's the twenty.
Less than twenty, so then you're about.
Most, most of my people use the other lot.
So potentially forty.
Through the chair. Is it on your property or not?
Yes. Is it on your, is it on the church property?
You can see this piece that sticks out, and you can see the property line right here, it's probably thirty-four feet off there.
Through the chair, does he have an agreement with that, a butter or anything?
No. I don't. He says former pastors allowed him to park there.
But it's not his.
It's not his.
Doesn't mean anything, I mean. Only by adverse possession.
I don't think you can do adverse possession against a church.
No.
That's one of those protected.
I don't think so.
So that could be a one-way access in right there, and a one-way access coming out. So everything, nobody's crossing a crosswalk.
Yeah.
Probably go behind the church and wrap it around it, isn't it?
Yeah.
You got that little piece that sticks out.
It goes on his.
What's in that little jar? An old stairway or?
No, it's just, uh, windows and, uh, a place to stand.
I don't think you're going to have ten feet though.
I would move that out.
That's idea.
Chair, given the discussion, what do you guys feel would be ideal for you?
Idea of leaving it the way it is.
That was the issue. Totally refreshed, sorry. Which of the town engineer's recommendations is most comfortable for you?
What, what do you want to think about?
A one-in, one-out is probably the best.
On the south side, widen it whether you have to take the tree or not.
Tree's coming down. Tree's coming down. No matter what you do for that piece of property, you interrupt that piece of property, that tree's going to die anyway.
Well, that's a several, I'm not sure.
The roots are right at the surface, right near the.
The signs are here.
Yeah.
That's all you, that's all you surface, which you have the roots way inside of the tree.
Uh, just so clear, you're saying one-way in, one-way out?
Both way.
And the one-way.
You'd widen that driveway.
Yeah.
In and out only, block off the other landscaping, lead a handicap parking.
Right.
Pathway or sidewalk that's for the handicap. Where is that handicap sidewalk?
We can leave a sidewalk.
Right there. But those are spaces.
Yeah.
Those are the handicap spaces.
You're going to leave them and then just, no, we leave them.
You'd need to turn around. Through the chair, that's the, the other discussion. I think we have to have at least one van accessible, handicap space.
How do you do that when you're in line like that? I've never.
Well, you know what, now that you've got to close the driveway off, it's not a problem, because currently, there's a driveway. You need an eight-foot landing for the, for the van accessible space. Now, if you close it off, there's no problem with dri, cars coming in, uh, you could just stripe it that way. You could just stripe one of them.
As long as those are only well-marked handicap spaces, and the others in the back, you, you need to lie in the back.
You, you have to look at two providing access to the, the spaces now. By closing this driveway off, it may make more sense to stripe the handicap spaces in the back.
In the back.
Are they truly used by handicap vehicles on those, those spaces?
No. Mostly privately-owned vehicles with the placard.
You probably want to keep these close ones for folks getting to St. Joe's.
Yeah. So van people come up here to the center. Getting a person who, who needs van access or, or van assistance, which is your parking there and getting across the street is, is difficult. Most people who want to come to Mass on the weekend who have a van, use the center up here. And that's why we have Mass up here.
But if we do have those bus deal, like you said, though, are they going to, they're going to have, you don't want them backing up all the way into the back end of the lot.
Can you go to the church or parking lot and get that?
The, the old church, um, where would the handicap ramp be, the passage for that?
Same ones.
Why couldn't you put handicaps right up there in the back, we're closing off this access? Like, right there where the cursor is, won't it, three?
Yeah.
Or whomever. You decide the driveway.
I think there's plenty of room to relocate them.
Oh, yeah.
Just a matter of what works best for the church, for both churches.
And what's easy for them to come in and out with the van access instead of lying up here and having the back out?
I think.
Twelve-point turn to go around.
I think their engineer should look at it and come up with, in meeting with them and discussing what the best option is for them as well, if we're going to close this driveway off, there's lots of options, it's a huge parking lot. And I think looking at what's most convenient for, um, the handicap to access the old church, because if that church is going to be open again, you would be using the handicap space, and you'd want that to be closest to your ramp. If feasible, those are things your engineer should look at.
This, this is what the role, they're going to clean up some of that tree stuff, to get the sixty spaces of the asphalt that's under there. But these trees are right there.
Yeah.
That's just a mang.
That's.
As, as far as the tree on the left side of the driveway, I wouldn't take it down. I'd do my wife and see how the tree did. I would go that way.
Oh, lay it out, see where you are, and if somebody should.
I, I agree, I think this guy has a very deep root system, that if we minimize the cutting on that side, there's a good chance the tree will survive.
Well, you're going to be, you can cut a bunch of the tree off on that side, too. And it won't need to feed as much either. So where it's hanging out over the driveway, you're going to be trimming that up from the tree. You might say, but it's very well.
Any suggestions for landscaping for all that's closed up? Keep in mind, as, as you mentioned, people still blow through the stop sign, and it's been twenty years since it's been out. People are in the snow, we're not going to know that that has to strip up grass with a curb. So you're going to want something with, like shrubs, something with some height, you know? Just so that the seeds hold and they don't pull in there, and then drive over grass and make a mess.
Should there be any kind of an opening for emergency vehicles there?
Uh, you have plenty of access on the other end.
I mean, we.
Emergency vehicle, we drop the curb, we add to.
Right, through the chair, we, we could run that by, uh, police and fire. I think that they have one main access drive, and they have full circulation behind the parking lot. They'd probably be okay with the one drive. I think it's a difficult area to leave a driveway open for emergency access, because people don't tend to use it.
I just love you to do it all, I was.
Don't be tired, is that still? No audience?
I have one question. So far, Father Bamba has been great working with me on this project and so forth. However, there's going to be two different owners once we buy this property. Now you're eliminating the driveway to this property. I don't think that the Catholic Church will probably ever sell this property, but if they did one day, what would happen with our property?
You'd get a perpetual easement to have access to the back.
So that's going to reduce the value of my property.
So, I mean, I think, well, I can't say.
Come on, a buyer's not going to want a buyer.
Depends on what they're going to do there. It's going to be another church, I mean, if you're going to close the church and sell that building, then it's.
Without building, that church is not a church, it's a rectory.
Correct.
It's a house.
It's a house.
That's, that's my concern, is that not we don't have a driveway.
All the way.
In back of the tree line, does it go in?
Big time.
Goes quite a bit back.
It goes all the way back. If you got a bigger view, it goes all the way back.
All the way back.
Back down to off-towns.
Yes.
And also, the, our property's not going to be very valuable without a driveway.
Well, bear in mind, this is Zone Residential A. So any, any business is going to require some form of variance to operate there, that isn't it?
It's not how.
Nonprofit use. No, this is natural residential A zone.
Ten thousand, that's what it was.
Right, if this was to be converted to a residence or something of that nature in the future, it easily put a driveway in front of the one.
Well, that's where you guys got to sit down and think about all those little things ahead of time, and make sure they're included in your purchase and sale.
How many acres, Father, do you own currently there?
I don't, I can tell you.
I can tell you through the chair, if it was sold as a residential property, um, wouldn't be much of an issue relative to traffic, but if they develop or wanted to purchase the entire parcel, I could see a full access intersection, potentially at the intersection, and then it's a traffic signal. So, I mean, it's, it would be a lot that would have to happen and a lot to consider if that were proposed, any major change like that.
Patent's office, a lot of there, isn't it?
I'm sure, in some ways, yeah.
Because on Auburn Street, coming up, it's three hundred fifty, or Patent Office, I believe. Coming up Auburn Street.
Yeah, residential office is on this office. Through the chair, every option I think we discussed tonight would require some sort of access or that property through the other driveway. Being if you were to leave one driveway right now, one-way in, you'd still need access all the way around exit.
And if we left it to us, we thought we might in the beginning, they'd still have to have their reason instead? That would go when they sold the property off.
Right, so I think every option we discussed would require an easement. You would want some insurance that you'd be able to exit out. If it's a one-way in, it's a one-way out.
I have to stay there and not be able to get out.
Wouldn't be able to get in.
Captain audience.
That's easy, wouldn't be able to get in.
Could also make a deal with the dentist.
All across the deck.
Yeah.
Right there. Let's just skip through the bylaws, Mr. Chairman, just looking at commercial uses. Anything in residential A is prohibited for commercial use. Retail, business, consumer services, or.
Would all require variances, essentially, I think.
Yeah. Or, or nonprofit. Unless they obtain the variance. So, as far as proceeding, we have to see some time to go over anything. Obviously, we have, we do have another development coordinating group meeting coming up on the eighteenth, it's the next week. Any ideas you want to throw, so we can talk about this with Auburn Fire and Police Department if that closure is an option, or, or any other ideas you guys come up with together. That's the best option, uh, to help make this.
That's our next step.
And then we can button all this stuff up in advance at the June, uh, the July twenty-fourth meeting. Hopefully come to a vote at that time. I think that would be the best recourse for, for all parties.
We all wrapped up in two weeks.
Nick, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Scott?
Um, no, just that I think you guys do really need to get together, because there's, on-street parking is not an option here. This, none of this works without an easement or a license, and licenses are freely revocable, so, um, you know.
John? You said I think you guys got to do some more work.
We do.
It's not something that's going to happen right away, but we'll work with you and try to hopefully make sure that it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, before you leave.
Have a motion to continue to July twenty-fourth, seven P M.
Second it.
All those in favor? Aye, there's a vote, July twenty-fourth, seven P M. Nick, how long was the guarantee on it?
How long? They got boxed plenty of them for you. Only going to work a few months. So next one, you got to fight with it. Well, I'm, you're going to need some thinking. I'd like to do some data. It's a Wednesday. We can discuss it, then try to win. But, um, meantime, just kind of wait for you guys to get back to us, because it's not long to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We have a seven oh five public hearing. The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at fifty-four Faith Ave. This continuance was requested by the applicant.
Yes, uh, Mr. Brooks, the, I spoke to the owner, David Masson, today, and we're waiting for a state approval, as we all know. But, um, I told him about last hearing, how the engineer didn't show. And he had some confusion between the application that's actually coming next meeting. It's for, um, three residential lots that he purchased, it's going to be for a hundred and sixty-eight space in the parking lot. That's, um, on the western side of Faith Avenue. So he mistook it for that application, because I explained it to him today that we're talking about the one that's still pending state approval. So he happily signed a continuance for us today until we hear more about that. I did get contacted by the state, they're trying to push the bill through. It said some additional questions for us, which I went over with the town manager today and, and sent our responses in. And we're just waiting to hear more about it, so. Play goes through soon. The continuance was signed by Mr. Masson, and we received it today.
You'd like the continuance to July twenty-fourth also. Do you have a motion to continue this to July twenty-fourth?
I'd like to motion to continue it to July twenty-fourth.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. There's a vote. We have a seven-ten public hearing. The applicant is Pakichog Farms LLC. A definitive subdivision plan for a seven-lot subdivision and construction of a new roadway with a stormwater management system located at seventy-one Curtis Street. This has been, has been requested to be continued to July twenty-fourth also. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, um, so the request came in, uh, we did receive updated plans, which I'll pass out to you guys in advance of our twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, they did not include some of the comments that Mr. Regan and I discussed previously, and that I had met with their new engineer, Mike Scott from Waterman Design. So, uh, we brought those to their attention, and those not being on there, they agreed to try to add those to the plan in advance of that. In the meantime, I also sent the revised edition over to Jeff Wolfson at Gray's Engineer, who commented on the relocation, the emergency doorway. We have feedback on that, too, and I'll have that circulated for the next meeting.
We have the vote to continue.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to continue this to July twenty-fourth?
Make a motion to continue it to July twenty-fourth.
Second.
Also, gentlemen.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
This is a note, Mr. Chairman, the deadline for that application is bug is seventeenth, for us to have a decision signed. So unless the applicant requests an extension at the next meeting, or the August fourteenth, oh, no. We're gonna request an extension, or we're gonna have to be forced to vote.
To vote, yes, uh. Cause we've been pretty gracious with this.
I expect them to.
Extremely gracious. It's been continued for what, almost two years?
Not quite.
A long time. Okay, we have a seven-eleven public hearing, the applicant is the Auburn Planning Board for a request to hold a public hearing to discuss potential rescission of a definitive subdivision approval in accordance with M G L Chapter forty-one and eighty-one W and Auburn Subdivision Rules and Regulations Section six point three for a subdivision known as Pakichog Farms at seventy-one Curtis Street. This has been continued from June twenty-sixth after requesting the applicant. And it's the one we just talked about for seventeen.
So, Mr. Chairman, for this one, since it's our hearing that we called for, and it had been uh, more than two instances in which Mr. Lynch was in presence, and only three of you that could well continue this today.
They wanna continue to July twenty-fourth also.
Well, that one's ours. That's, we're piggybacking.
We can just leave it?
Yes, but we should continue it to the twenty-fourth along with the other.
Do you have a motion to continue the seven-eleven Auburn Planning Board hearing to June, July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen?
I'll make the motion to call it July twenty-fourth.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, there's a vote. Signatures Seventeen Mill Street and eight thirty-eight Saltwood Street. Got ready, Nick?
Yeah, I have signature pages, but not decisions. I will circulate the decisions when they're ready. The Seventeen Mill Street one is gonna go to the applicant's attorney first as well, so. But once they're ready, the board will see that before I apply the signature page, that's the final decision. These can be signed by, uh, two. Yes.
I'm gonna wait till Wendy comes back.
Yes, and then I have to check on Jason Rins.
You're waiting for Wendy, right?
I can get her at another time. She doesn't have to be here.
In the discussion, associate member, we are going, we, at least anybody knows anyone that would who is an associate member, anything?
I should announce, uh, Mr. Brooks, I didn't do this, but, uh, at our last meeting, uh, Mr. Lynch was our associate member at the departure, Mr. Faber, now, Mr. Lynch has become our present full-time member, so the associate, we can see position is now open again.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sure you don't want to take notes?
July and August meeting schedule, so we're gonna have a second meeting, obviously, in July.
Yes.
And then we'll have one anyways in the beginning of August.
Yes. And not just because of the ones we continue, we received two new applications that were advertised for the July twenty-fourth meeting. I understand that, um, that Rachel will not be here for that meeting, but that's why we have video.
Okay, the next meeting is July twenty-fourth. We have the minutes of six, twelve, eighteen, and six, twenty-six.
Make the motion, I'll slow the minutes to six, twelve, six, one, six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Anything else, Matt? Anything else, anyone? Dick? Wanna say anything?
Speechless.
We have a motion for adjournment?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, adjourn.